Welcome to the Rapid City Planning Commission, April 24, 2014. We're going to have to hold the meeting off because we don't have a quorum. We need one more person to attend, so we'll give them a few minutes in case they're late. We have a few housekeeping tasks. At this time, I'm asking any member of the audience who has a cellphone or other electronic device that either turn it off or turn it on, the ringer to silent. If you need to take a cellphone call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disturbed. We'll begin with the consent calendar. Items one through seven have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items: Item three, 14 PD 002; Item four, 14 UR 008; Item five, 11 PD 007. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning, excuse me, to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through seven that staff would like removed from the consent calendar? Are there any items one through seven the planning commission would like removed from the consent calendar for separate consideration? Are there any items one through seven that an audience member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate consideration? The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendars, items one through seven, at this time.
Don't move.
Items, one through seven, and the motion's been made to approve these items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we will go to the regular agenda items, and so, item number eight.
Thank you, good morning. Item number eight is 14 PD 005, a final planned development to allow a restaurant on approximately 1.53 acres of property located at 1323 East North Street. This is immediately north of the existing on-the-border location. Let me take you through some slides. As you can see, the property's own general commercial district, it's located in a planned development. Aerial view shows the on-the-border located in the south of the property here. This is the rest of the area proposed for development, will be a restaurant known as Popeyes Louisiana Chicken. Site layout showing the proposed development of the property. This will have two drive-through lanes, stack parking is being provided. Look at the landscaping for the property, a little bit clearer view of the location of the restaurant and the site layout, including access from the two frontage roads, or from Century Road here and from a frontage road to be built there. Look at the signage for the property. Many of you are aware there is an existing sign on the property today, which has three sign faces, one of which is being used currently for on-the-border. Popeyes is proposing to use one of those sign faces for its own restaurant. You can see there the visualization of what that logo will look like on the sign. Shots of the property, you can see the sign posted on the property today. Look at East North Street looking to the west and to the south, East North Street looking to the north and to the east. Look at Century Road looking towards East North Street, and this is where one of the accesses to the restaurant and one of the existing accesses to on-the-border currently exists today. I'll look at that sign that we mentioned previously. Development will be occurring essentially behind that sign in this photo. And I'll look at the frontage road. This frontage road is being proposed to be constructed to city street standards as a part of this final plan development. Another look at the property from the frontage road looking to the north and east. The proposed restaurant meets all the requirements of the general commercial district. Parking and access agreements have been, are in the process of being finalized with on-the-border to allow parking and access to be taken for on-the-border through the proposed Popeyes location and vice versa. Staff has received no inquiries into the request. Staff recommends that the final plan development to allow restaurant be approved with the stipulations outlined in the staff report. We're available for any questions if you have them.
Do you, commission members, have any questions? Entertain a motion?
To approve with stipulations?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number nine, ordinance amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number nine is an ordinance amendment to amend the central business district to allow a pet store as a conditional use in our central business district. You may recall that on March 6th, staff came before you to see whether or not you would concur with us coming forward with an ordinance amendment to allow a pet store, which otherwise to date had not been identified as a permitted or a conditional use in the central business district. You had some discussion and voiced some concern of some of the nuisances that could be created with a pet store within our downtown area, and you did direct staff to come forward with an ordinance amendment to allow a pet store as a conditional use. A little history on why we came to you with this discussion in the first place. The Humane Society on an annual basis sends us a list of businesses that require a kenneling license. The list, on that list this year included a store in our downtown area at 910 Main Street known as Mount Rushmore Birds. When we looked at whether or not the ordinance allowed a pet store in the central business district, we filled out the questionnaire and said, "No, it was not permitted or conditional." They in turn got ahold of the owners of the store and said that it could not remain in that location, that it wasn't permitted in the central business district. Needless to say, that caused a lot of stress on that property owner, since they'd been serving a very good purpose in our downtown area, not only with operating a pet store to sell birds, but also in recovery and rescue work. We sat down with the property owner and with the operator of the facility, and we walked through how they actually do operate their facility. As planners, we also looked at what other communities allow in their downtown area, and we did find that several of them do have pet stores as conditional uses within that core. We were then invited to take a tour of the facility, and a few of us did go down, and we were given a wonderful tour to see how the pet store that is there today is operated and maintained. And I must say, it was very pleasing to see the integrity that that store is, is maintained in. Staff then sat down, we looked at what we needed to do to establish criteria to ensure that if we're going to open up a pet store that would allow all types of animals to be sold in our downtown area, that it was designed and was operated with the same integrity that the one that currently exists at 910 Main Street. I'll bring to your attention a handout that's on the agenda today, and it lists the criteria that we came up with, and this is reminiscent of what other cities have brought forward as a part of their ordinance as well. And if we can just go over them real quickly. The pet store shall be located within a soundproof climate-controlled building. Veterinary care shall be provided pursuant to local and state requirements. Boarding shall not be allowed unless otherwise approved by the planning commission. A waste disposal plan shall be provided for review and approval, and a kenneling license shall be obtained. In reviewing the operation of the store that's there today, they meet all of these requirements. They will be coming forward as a part of their conditional use permit to ask the planning commission for consideration of boarding because of the rescue work that they do. Staff will be supporting that when it does come forward. It's important to also note that you don't see a lot in here about the criteria for the care of the animals. If you look at what is required in the kenneling license, it spells out how the animals should be fed, how the cages should be maintained, and it also identifies that the animal control officer that has the expertise in that field is the one that will govern that. Certainly as planners and the city's code enforcement officers, that is not our area of expertise, and we'll rely on that provision that the city is a part of with the county, and it's all a function of the Humane Society, to police that aspect of it. The fact that we're bringing it to you as a conditional use requires that when anyone wants to come into our downtown core and bring forward an application for a pet store, it has to meet the stipulations of a conditional use permit, and that goes to the appropriate of the location contingent upon some of the surrounding uses. It requires the notification of those property owners within 250 feet, so they can be made aware that we're going to have that use brought into the neighborhood. Even though this, the one existing pet store we have downtown, has been well-received by the neighborhood, we've got letters of support from the adjacent property owner indicating that there isn't any nuisances being created by this one, that's not to say that the next one won't be operated or have some concerns, and we want to make sure that everyone still operates with this same integrity. So, in summary, in looking at what other cities have done, in establishing the criteria for the pet store, in looking at what is set forth as a part of a conditional use permit, as staff, we are supporting amending the ordinance to allow a pet store as a conditional use in the central business district. I know we have a lot of people here today that are in support of this ordinance amendment, and more particularly in support of the existing store that's located at 910 Main Street. What I'd like to point out, though, is that for today, what's on the agenda is the generic ordinance amendment that would apply to anyone that wanted to come into our downtown core. Once this is approved by the city council, then we will work with the operators of this facility to bring forward a conditional use permit that will be specific to them, and we certainly hope that the supporter she has today can come back and join us at that meeting, so that would be the appropriate meeting to speak specifically to the operation and the deeds and the duties that are a part of that particular store. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, and I know you've got some speaker request cards.
Any questions for commission? I have one speaker request for him, and so, Betty, would you please come? Please give your name.
My name is Betty Backus. Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, I am here in support of Barb and Patrick Parr and their business, Mount Rushmore Birds, a specialty bird store that has been located in the central business district for seven years. They sell finches, canaries, parakeets, cockatiels, and parrots. They do not sell other pets. Barb and Patrick are certified avian specialists with a loyal customer following from a five-state area. Prior to purchasing Parr's Pet Bakery and Gifts, which was located at 607 St. Joe, an inquiry was made to city planning to see if Mount Rushmore Birds would be allowed in that location. Barb and Patrick were told they could move their business into that storefront, which is in the central business district. Why now, after seven years and in their third central business district location, is Mount Rushmore Birds suddenly in the sights of city planning? It is a known fact that through the years, there have been stores in the central business district who have sold pets. Why has a long-overlooked, unenforced ordinance suddenly been resurrected? Why has it only been decided to enforce this ordinance at the expense of a long-established business that is an asset to downtown Rapid City? Commission member concerns regarding odors, noise, and disposal of waste are without merit as there have not been any complaints against Mount Rushmore Birds during their seven years in the central business district. In fact, I believe many of you have not heard of this business until sometime during the last six weeks. They have been and will continue to be responsible pet owners and good neighbors. It is time to move forward, review the ordinance, make the necessary changes, and enforce the ordinance for new businesses. A conditional use application should not be required for Mount Rushmore Birds. Instead, grandfather this business, allow them to continue to operate in the central business district as they have for the past seven years. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Remember, we are now speaking to the ordinance. If you would give your name, please.
Good morning, my name is Laura Hayder. I just want you to consider my request in support of Mount Rushmore Birds and Parr's Bakery. This business is an asset to the central business district. Mrs. Parr maintains an immaculate store. The business is a specialty store that draws shoppers to the downtown area. I feel Mount Rushmore Birds and Parr's Bakery should not have to pay for a conditional use permit. This business has been in the central business district for seven years without incident. Please amend the ordinance to include pet stores in the central business district. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded to approve this item. All those in favor, please, oh, there's a question, excuse me, Karen.
Touchy mic here. Thank you. First, I just want to say to you folks, it's unfortunate that this was overlooked for seven years. Seven years ago, if we'd had this in our ordinance, it would have been required to have a conditional use permit. Why it was brought to our attention at seven years later, I don't know that we know, maybe it was something that the Humane Society overlooked, or who knows? But it was brought to our attention. Once it's brought to our attention, it requires us to take some kind of action with that. And we certainly didn't want to remove this business from our downtown. It has been run as a good business. So now we're at the point where the planning commission has agreed that we need to look at an ordinance amendment to put this to right and make this a legal business downtown. And I think that's appropriate, I think that's what we need to do, not just for this particular business, but for all pet stores downtown. I personally know of a pet store that was located in town, not downtown, but in town, and the neighbors who were adjacent to that pet store did have some issues, and it wasn't a bird store, it was a pet store. They had some snakes in there, and the snakes got out and got into the adjacent business. And so, there is a reason why we have to have some kinds of, some kind of ordinances and some kind of way to track and make sure that pet stores are handled properly. And I appreciate the comments that were made. All of you who spoke, come back when you have the conditional use permit and just bring your same story, because that's where it's appropriate to read, that story about the pet store that's proposed to go in there, or that is in there that's proposed for it to stay. So, I approve the ordinance amendment. I think the planning commission, because we've asked to have it come forward, I think we're all going to approve it. But this will, this will make the business legal, and any other pet store that wants to come forward, it will be legal if they go through the same process, so, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I direct a question at Vicky Fisher, please?
Sure.
Thank you. And Vicky, just for clarification, this will pass the planning commission and then come to city council, and when it comes to city council, it'll have to go through two readings or just one?
It'll actually stop at legal and finance first and hit that committee meeting, then it'll go for first reading and discussion at city council on May 5th, and then two weeks later for the second reading, which is your final action on it. Once it goes through that first reading, we'll begin working with the operator of the, the bird store, and we will assist them in bringing forward that conditional use permit application, so we can time it that it comes to planning commission shortly after it becomes effective.
Thank you, Vicky. I wanted the clarification for the owners and the supporters to know that what the sequence is going to be, that unfortunately, today is not the final decision, government has to go through all of the steps. And thank you for you and your staff, Vicky, for working so hard on this, thank you. And thank you to the planning commission for approving this unanimously. Well, you haven't taken the vote yet, I'm assuming that. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? If not, the motion's been made and seconded for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Item number 10, and thank you all for coming. We do appreciate, we love having faces in the audience.
Item number 10 is an initial planned development to allow a mix of commercial uses and storage in excess of 5,000 square feet at 412 Fifth Street, location of Abby's Feed and Seed right across the street. Property's owned general commercial district. Here's an aerial showing the current existing structures located on the property. The applicant is requesting three exceptions. The first, to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to zero feet along these streets, Fifth Street and Rapid Street. The second exception is to allow 11,800 square feet of storage space in lieu of the maximum allowed 5,000 square feet in the general commercial district. And the third exception is to reduce the minimum required parking from 42 parking spaces to 29 parking spaces. The first exception being the reduction in setbacks from 25 feet to zero feet. This is an existing structure, a historic structure. These are existing issues, we just want to clean them up for this existing building. Staff recommends that that exception be granted for those reasons. The second exception is to allow 11,800 square feet of storage space, and let me get to the, basically, the majority of the building, on the east side, this light green will be storage. The proposed uses, or the existing uses in the structure are dance studio and an interior design office. The applicant is proposing to expand to allow retail space in this area here. The, the rest of the building being identified as storage is to reduce the minimum parking requirement. Any change in use would require a major amendment to the planned development. Staff recommends that that exception be approved. The third is the reduction in parking from 42 parking spaces to 29 parking spaces. As shown, the majority of the building will be used as, or is identified as storage. The proposed uses and the existing uses on the property, we have a dance studio here, the applicant has indicated that there's an evening theater, which would be operating after the retail uses had closed, and that the primary users of the dance studio are students, which are kids who are dropped off by their parents, so they're not using a lot of the parking. Because of the applicant's operations plan and the identified uses, staff recommends that the reduction in parking be granted specifically for the proposed uses, and that any change in use require a major amendment to the planned development. Before you on the dais is a copy of the stipulations of approval. If you look at stipulation number 13, it's been revised to read that prior to issuance of a building permit, property owners shall initiate a covenant agreement in cooperation with the Rapid City Fire Department to provide the required fire protection systems within an acceptable timeframe. I'll allow Tim Billings to explain the reason for that stipulation, but right now, I'll finish taking you through a few more of the pictures. This is the area that is proposed for the new retail space. This is looking at, you can see the existing structure, most of it is in the historic district. Looking across the street at the city parking garage, looking south on Fifth Street, and to the north towards the intersection of Omaha, and looking at some of the general areas signed as posted on the property, and that's looking into the interior where the parking will be located. So I will allow Tim Billings to discuss the requirement of the stipulation. Staff recommends that the initial planned development be approved with the revised stipulation.
Good morning, thank you. I apologize for the late delivery of this particular item to show up on the dais this morning, but as I was reading through this and looking over the project, it became obvious that I hadn't provided sufficient detail to let you know what the reasoning is behind this, this particular item. The fire department's excited to see this site reused and utilized. It's, it's sitting downtown, it's a very vulnerable piece of property from a fire standpoint, and it's also a very difficult or challenging one for us to respond to because of the limited site access overall. It seems to be, when you look at the, at the site plan, it appears that there's a lot of space around the structure, but unfortunately, it's primarily taken up with narrow alleys, railroad right-of-way, public right-of-way, and it makes it difficult for us to access. So I wanted to make sure that, ensure that the applicants were, had the So I wanted to make sure that, ensure that the applicants were, had the opportunity and were aware that we want, we need to work with them ahead of any project to ensure that fire protection features are initiated for that structure. So we have a plan to see where we're going to go with that, and to make sure that it is protected and preserved, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Karen? No, no.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to comment that I'm, I'm really pleased this is going forward, because it's the historic buildings out there, and there's some issues with that. It has been difficult to figure out what to do with it without tearing down the whole place, and nobody wants to do that. So I support this, and I, I think this is going to be a good fit to start with, so thank you, guys.
Dennis?
Tim, would you put the slide back up? It shows the actual parking and how it's going to be laid out.
It'll be a one-way access from Fifth Street coming into the parking area, and then the two-way access from the alley, and that'll be the one, the exit. Yes. Entrance only on Fifth.
And where were the other 10 or 12 parking spots that we're losing?
Sorry, what was the question?
We're reducing the number of parking spots that are allowed.
From 42 spaces to 29. 42 is the minimum required based on the uses on the site.
That's the minimum, right.
Yep. The only, the amount they can provide onsite is 29, so they're asking to reduce that minimum requirement from 42 to 29.
Since we have a major issue with parking downtown, is there any way to, for the owners to expand some of the parking?
Well, this is all a fully developed site. I don't know that there, there's any room for additional parking onsite.
Vicki?
Yeah, this is one of those infill development sites, you know, trying to bring a reasonable reuse of these existing structures, and they have such a historic significance in our community. What they're proposing far exceeds what's there today, and controlling the ingress and egress, as Fletcher has identified, will improve the safety of those entering and exiting the property along Fifth Street. As you can see, a large portion is identified as storage, and as Fletcher's indicated, when those uses start changing, then we'll certainly, I think that will be the, the more important question of where is the parking going to be for that. What we find in instances like this is that when we get uses in here, if there isn't sufficient parking, they won't get the customers, because there's no other place to park. So they'll kind of police themselves on that. When we look at our downtown parking issue as a whole, and we see some improvements, as we all know, there's been a lot of discussion about that lately, there may be some leased parking off-site that would come in the future. But for today, as staff looked at this with the limited commercial activity that's proposed, with the amount of storage that's being secured, we felt comfortable that this was a reasonable reuse of an existing development. And so that's why we were bringing forward the request that you support the reduction in parking for this plan.
Fletcher, I think I referred to you as Tim, and I'm sorry. But anyway, I, we need to continue to bring forward the need for parking, and I think it's a wise development for this area, but we need to make sure that the city council understands that parking remains a major issue for the expansion and development of our downtown area. Thank you very much.
Jan?
I just like to report to you that as a result of my being liaison to the city council meeting last Monday, I do know that the city council is studying the parking, and one of the spaces of one of the areas they're considering in parking is just north of that area, which would supply between 800 and 1,000 parking spaces. I'm not sure that they'd work for downtown, but they'd certainly work for, for that location if, if they decide to do that. But anyway, they were studying that, and, and I accept your condolences for having to be the liaison to the city council meeting. Thank you.
Amanda, do you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My understanding, just to reiterate, Fletcher, is that the parking, the 29 parking spaces that are being asked, there's not 42 in existence today.
No, there are not.
The 42 parking spots is the minimum for a development of this time normally, and they're just asking for an exception and only put in the 29.
Yes.
Okay. So now that we got that clarified, and then, yes, in order to, just for the, on the parking conversation, I had the opportunity to read the Rapid City Journal first thing this morning, too, and there is an article in there that it looks like the developers for President's Plaza and the mayor are into negotiations to further that development, and as we all know, the main public portion of the President's Plaza is additional parking for the downtown area. And as was discussed on Monday night, and Mr. Limbaugh could probably explain more as well, but I think I can cover the, the main points of it, is that, as we all know, parking in the downtown area is at a premium, and those, that original, you know, part of Rapid City was developed when lots were smaller. We didn't really consider parking, you know, we, Rapid City was around during the whole, the old horse and buggy, and bicycle, and walking, and, you know, as technology increased, now we have to find spaces for parking or in order to get people moved around. You know, a lot of the conversation about parking, I believe it was Alderman Chad Lewis mentioned, you know, Rapid City doesn't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. Nobody really wants to walk, so. But I can tell you, I do try to walk. I mean, I try to get the exercise, I see the benefit of it, but unfortunately, in this timeframe of our lives, time is of the essence. And even though we'd like to say, "Yeah, you can walk three blocks," or "You can walk a mile," yeah, you can, but if you're in a time constraint, it doesn't really fit your schedule. So you've got to manage that balance of getting customers downtown and being able to, to provide the access to them based on their schedule, not based on just, "We need to get healthier, Rapid City," because I am a proponent of, "We need to get healthier, Rapid City, we need to get healthier, Amanda Scott." So, but we are looking at the parking. If Mr. Limbaugh has anything else he can add, I, I, staff is looking at it. I know city council has encouraged staff, the mayor has encouraged staff to really look at the parking, and we're always on the lookout to try to provide the public parking that is required to meet all of our needs downtown. Thank you.
Anyone else desire to speak? No? Okay. Any other?
I move approval of the...
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
With the revised...
With the revised stipulations to approve item number 10. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Any other items? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Motion was made and seconded, meeting adjourned. I don't even vote.